Good evening, folks. Planning Board Meeting, January 13th, 2021. Call a meeting to order at 6:31. And I'll do a roll call vote of members present. Richard Wright.
Here.
Lindsey Butler.
Here.
Larry Boudreaux.
Yeah.
Walt Meisner.
Here.
Roger Hoyt, here. As this is a remote meeting, it will be recorded. If you're not speaking, please mute your microphones. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moved.
Second. Okay, so Walt Meisner and Richard Wright. Do a roll call vote. Richard Wright?
Here.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Larry Boudreaux?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt, yes. Okay. Chairman comments, I have nothing at this point. We have Lorraine from the Open Space and Recreation Committee to lead us in the discussion on open space residential developments and past history and experiences. So, do you want me to bring up a document, Lorraine? Do you want to share?
Um, I'd like to share it.
Okay, make sure I can get that set up here.
It's okay, Rose. Here's your dog.
Oh, where is that on here now? I'm not finding that setting.
Bottom center?
Yeah.
Need to try. I don't know where it is.
Green button chair screen, and it's telling me that I-
Use your right, right click on, and then you should be able to give permission to share. Assuming she gave you permission from the beginning. Gary gave you permission from the beginning.
Can you see it?
Now I do, yes. Thank you.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank you, Roger. It's been a long time since we've been able to interact with the planning board, and it's been we've really missed this relationship. So really, thank you for this opportunity. It's been a long time, so the details at this point are a little bit vague. I've tried to document them as best as Gary and I could remember and pull up as many supporting documents as we could find. We do have supporting documents for the projects that the land trust was most involved in, and I only have one document that the municipality was part of. But in that, this is only a 20-minute conversation. We're just going to hit the high points, and I look forward to further conversations and maybe work sessions with the planning board so that we could better the existing regulations and make these projects more successful going forward. I realize that with this current one, we're probably, we're locked into the bylaws as they stand, but we would love to have further discussions, and perhaps you'll agree once you see how we failed miserably in the past to make this work. And so I picked up four projects, and I started with the one that is most illustrative and kind of went down in a progressive order. I thought I would start with the way that things should go, the way they should be structured, and, and use the land trust layering model as an example, where you start out with a piece of property, someone owns it, they have a fee ownership in a property that, and they decide they want to sell it to a developer or, you know, develop it themselves. So that fee owner can be the original owner or a new owner. Now, when, when you, when all is said and done, whatever terms you establish for that property, all the rights and restrictions stay with the property, and they convey to the new owner in perpetuity. But they should, but the fee owner and the CR holder should never be the same entity. So you want to have someone hold a conservation restriction on property. It's a legal instrument that's held by an entity other than the fee holder. It can be a municipal, municipality, state or federal agency, or a land trust, or other conservation organization. And it defines the terms of the allowed rights and the uses and prohibited, prohibited activities. In this agreement, this is an agreement between, between the owner of the property and the CR restriction holder. It memorializes the legal responsibility for enforcement by a second party. It should be recorded in the registry of deeds before permit approvals are given.
And, Lorraine, explain that to me again, or explain that to me. You say the responsibility is held by a third party?
The responsibility for enforcement, not the responsibility for behavior. But if someone that you go, that you enter into a contract with breaches that contract, it is the responsibility of the entity that holds the conservation restriction that is responsible for retaining lawyers or, you know, working with the landowner, trying to remediate the breach of contract. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah.
They actually, they own the legal rights for further development beyond what was established originally when the land was put into protection. So it's, it's, and it avoids that the land, the fox watching the hen house kind of thing. Now, there are some situations, and I know our bylaw allows for homeowners association, but they're too susceptible. If you're self-monitoring or self-policing, and even if it's not intentional, if it's over time, people just didn't understand what the terms were initially. And by degrees, you know, one, one lawnmower swipe at a time, your open space gets eroded and ownership lines get blurred. And as far as, I mean, and then it could go further, someone's actually building on it. So without someone, the person who owns the conservation restriction, they basically own the development rights. You're, you're buying, by the way, you, you compensate the owner for the, the lost revenue from that upfront. So you're buying those development rights and extinguishing that activity. And then the, the owner retains the right to do whatever it is that you did when you, when you first drafted that conservation restriction, which should be reviewed by the state. It's not just something you kind of write up. It's a very legal document. It goes to the state for approval. Does that make sense?
So the owners continues to own the land, though?
Yes, they can, yes.
They can. So, so if someone, if a developer comes along and wants to make a part, put a conservation restriction on a section of a, of a, of a, of an acreage that they are developing, you know, or houses, the actual owner, I can understand the conservation restriction, but the actual owner or the owners of all the houses who, in an association or whatever, they would be the ones that are paying the taxes on that land, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then they have the rights to use it according to the terms of the conservation restriction.
Okay.
Okay, if it's a farmer-
Have to be public, or it doesn't, that depends on the conservation restriction.
I think that probably depends on the conservation restriction, but if it's the state that holds it, you know they wanted to be public. If it's a municipality, they probably wanted to have public access. I don't know if it is required or not, but it's generally encouraged, especially if the state has purchased it. A conservation restriction can be donated or it can be sold or purchased by an entity, in which case they want, they're doing it on behalf of public benefit. And in public access, it's like, in hunting, for instance, if fisheries purchases a conservation restriction, they want to make sure that it's open to hunting and passive recreation. And they're the ones that will be policing and monitoring and making sure that people aren't putting up no hunting signs or no trespassing signs or such. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Thank you.
And so in order to make sure that happens, and this is where we've made the mistake each and every time, is that requires, it requires money. Lawyers don't do anything for nothing. And some properties need to, need stewardship, they need to be maintained. And the developer slash landowner should pay for that. They should, they should, they should pay a fee, a substantial fee sometimes. That depends on the size of the land and the difficulty to monitor it. They should pay into an account that the town would hold, or the CR holder would hold this money in an account, in the event that the contract is breached and there's an encroachment, then all they have to do is call a lawyer. It also should be worked into your memorandum of understanding that the fee holder or the, the breacher of the contract is your legal, your legal expenses. But you want to be able to work fast, and if you needed money for a retainer to get a lawyer working on it, then you need to have ready access to that. That's another thing that we've not always been good about doing. We were just so eager to get land conserved that we take about it, take just about anything, and then later on find out that, you know, the deal didn't go through. And I'm going to show you a document in the next slide or two that is clearly the land trust could have gone after this developer according to this agreement. But it's essential, if you do whatever you do and get the money up first, even the trustworthy should not be, you know, you might have a good feeling about a guy or a developer, or anything, oh, well, you know, he'll be fine. Things happen. Sometimes maybe they don't want to breach the memorandum of understanding, but they do. And you're stuck with, you know, a situation where the developer got all his breaks, his setback reductions and everything, and the land never got protected. And then it's kind of late to go back. Another thing that you need is a backup, well, another thing that land trusts rely upon is they never hold something alone. They always have a partner because of holds. You're still obligated to make sure that this land is protected. So you need to find another conservation organization or like organization that will assume your responsibilities, your enforcement responsibilities. So even if you, if a land trust owns the land, it needs a, like a godfather, it needs someone to have it pass on to so that the land doesn't fall out of conservation and become developed. So those two things, the, the actual ownership and then that legal responsibility, which is the restriction, have to be, had to have backups. A town is not unlikely to disappear, so that's not necessarily a problem. But for, for land trusts, that's always, you know, a risk that the land trust will hold. And then, and then you have to require monitoring, again, by a second party, not the fee holder. And land trust and the state do annual monitoring. They walk the perimeters, they check the status, make sure there's been no encroachment from the butters, submit a report to the state if it's state, if the CR, for instance, Bush Hill, the land, the town owns the 400 acres. The state owns the conservation restriction. That's what, you know, we got, we got money from the state, they hold the rest, they require, and sometimes they go out, sometimes they use the land trust to go out on other properties to do the monitoring for them. But that's part of what the, the payments are, the stewardship, excuse me, and legal defense payments. Part of that is if there's like, for instance, if a conservation, if our conservation commission does, they do have land, should be monitored, but they don't have the bandwidth to do it. They should have been taking money. Every time you take a piece of land, whether it's wet, developed, doesn't matter, whenever you take that, you take that responsibility of monitoring it. If, if there's no one there to go out and do that, they need to be able to pick up the phone and call somebody and pay them. They'd be more than happy to go out, walk the perimeters, issue a report back to the conservation commission. It's, doesn't cost that much, but it's essential. And we all know what it costs to hire Debbie, so if something does happen, there should be money there, and that's where we've been remiss in just about every, every turn here. People are always trying to jump off wetland to the town, and no one wants to, because they don't want to pay taxes on it anymore, they can't develop it. People start encroaching us. We have a lot of land that's that's out of, people are actually using and not paying taxes on, to some degree, just the rail trail area as an example, where people are just sort of, it's very natural, just to go and inch at a time, a foot a year, before you know it, that land is gone, someone's got a swimming pool on top of it, because nobody was watching.
The landowner should be paying taxes on it. Because if I-
Well, they don't own it.
Well, yes. They do. They-
No, what I'm saying is-
But there's a conservation restriction on it. In other words, a developer comes along and says, I want to use 50% of this, and I want to put a conservation restriction on it. And they're wanting to make, put a conservation restriction on it, or they want to give it to somebody that has a conservation, will put a conservation restriction on it, because they don't, they want all of the benefits of having a, you know, having this situation, setbacks and all of the things that you just mentioned. So, so they do that. So suppose they set up a homeowners association and say, okay, we own the, we own this land, and we're paying taxes on this land, but we're, but we're also paying the state or the town or whatever, some fee to set up a conservation restriction on it. Then theoretically, the town, and I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, I don't know what the hell I'm talking about, but and thinking out loud, the, the town can say, okay, we're going to take this money here, and we're going to put it in a fund. And then every year in our budget, because we're getting some tax revenue from the people who are up on there, that goes into a conservation restriction fund, kind of thing. And all of the conservation restricted area that we're responsible for, working with the state and inspecting every year, has some sort of revenue stream for being able to deal with problems and liabilities that they come up. Presumably, they're not all going to have a problem. Is that kind of, am I thinking about this the right way or no?
Not exactly. It's a one-time fee. It's, it's a fee that they pay when you execute the conservation restriction, and then that's it. There is no further payment other than their, you know, they're paying on their individual lots. They're not going to, there's going to be some, some fee assessed to the open space portion depending upon who owns it. Now, if they give it to, if they give the land to the, to the town, obviously, they're not paying taxes on it.
Yeah, and that's-
But then you have to-
And that's what we need to get away, and this is in my opinion, we need to get away from the town owning land that's worthless to us, that we're responsible for, that we have to, you know, and that, you know, one $10,000 fee, for example, you know, to buy this conservation restriction is, is not going to support the town through perpetuity in dealing with that property. And it becomes something that we're not getting tax revenue on, and we have no, you know, and we can do nothing with it. And, and, and there is inevitably some cost that comes to that over time. And I, that, I'm just being somewhat of a devil's advocate here in saying, you know, we need to have some kind of a system here, because we're going to have to, this is one, this is, we have something coming up today, you know, on the, the property of the street, and that's what they, they want to make a part of this, a conservation restriction. We're giving that, the developer, all these benefits on that property, because they're giving us, you know, this land, but we don't want that land. We want, I want the tax revenue off that land. And I'm fine if he puts a conservation restriction on it, which limits the fact that they can't build on it or do anything else like that. But there's no way the public's going to be able to access that land. That's going to be accessed really only by the landowners that are up there. That would be, that, that's the basis of how I'm thinking about this.
Are we keeping order here for your time?
Probably not, no. Okay. Right, I didn't want to talk about the specific project and didn't think we-
No, no.
This meeting, but you're not quite, I do have some counterpoints, but let me continue.
Okay.
And, and again, this could be the beginning of further conversations. Just quickly, there's benefit to some of our open spaces, and part of your plan with, with your developers should be a proof of public benefit. It should be all part of the conversation, to prove that it's going to be valuable to the town. Okay, so, so the first project, let's, let's go way, way back to 2005. Nyman Farm, which is at the end, at the top of 101 and 119. The developer was Mike Cannon with Design with Nature, Levy was the same one. I think it was the same one who did the How is Court, Richie, if you were on and you remember, I'm not quite sure. But in this particular one, Nyman Farm, we have, on the bottom there, there are three pieces that were supposed to go into open space. That's all open space, one, two, and three. And one of it is that, that wetland on the left-hand side, just before you get to, to 119, and, and then some lots in the back, and they were all totally wet. But we would thought, oh, you know, we just, we want to protect the wetland, and, and that waterway, because it feeds into Billy Ward Pond. So we worked with this guy who was supposed to, according to this memorandum of understanding, was supposed to convey those three parcels and give them to the land trust. And this was all part of the special permit for the open space and residential development. He agreed to give it to the land trust plus $12,000 for stewardship and legal defense. He was supposed to mark it with boundaries so that people in subsequent years would know where the edges of these, what these, these open space areas were and would not encroach. So it's a legal document, it was signed, it was registered at the registry of deeds, it was a binding document. Well, things started going bad for him. He decided he couldn't afford to do this. He never paid the $12,000. He never conveyed, if you go on here, this is the, the property card that I pulled up this week. He never conveyed it, he still owns it. It's not, its use description is still as residential and open for development. Now, the land trust could legally go after him. At the time, we were, we were still new, we were learning, we were learning this ourselves, and then everyone after it, and so he got all the benefits, and that space, that land is still there. I've got the two. In, in fact, these two lots here, the three and two, look like they've been merged into one lot now with Frank, John, one still develop or not, I don't, I suspect it might be, I don't know, not two, two is pretty wet, but, but, but here was this great document, it spelled out the way it was supposed to be, it's asking for, for stewardship money, legal defense money. It just didn't happen. Because he just, he, he complained and said he didn't have the money anymore, and the economy tanked, and I'm so sorry, and he walked away.
Whose job is it to enforce that?
Well, what should have happened, what should have happened, let's see, I believe the town, if I read this document, the Ashingham Conservation Commission had the, holds the conservation, was supposed to hold the conservation restriction. So they would have been the enforcing agent, because it was, it was up to them to notice if there was anything awry, and they should have been able to pick up the phone and call a lawyer and make it happen. But if the conservation restriction was ever completed, I think this was, this was as far as Gary could find. And, you know, we thought we were doing really well. They got registered, he got his, his, he got his permits to build first, and you know, if he at least given them the $12,000, they could have hired a lawyer right away. But that never happened.
But it sounds to me he shouldn't have been allowed to complete the development without paying that money.
Correct. So that was as close as we, we came in terms of our slide and setting it up the way it should have been. And then there was How's Court. So these are the property cards for Design with Nature. So How's Court was another one, and I, I think it was Design with Nature, again.
It's changed hands several times.
And it has changed hands, yes, it has. And I don't know that the town was ever, you know, anyone that ever goes over and monitors it. It, the last time I heard that, well, I could document, was in 2014. One of the lots was sold to Edgewater Homes, and it's use description is condominium. Now, I don't understand the, I need, I need a tutorial here on, on, on assessor sheet information and zoning lingo, but it looks to me like that's open for development, even though on their map it has it as, I'm sorry, it keeps scrolling around. It's supposed to be in space. Let's pray out, excuse me. Go back. It's missing in here. Oh, no, innocent, let me zoom in a little bit so you can see it better. You can see there's two, two red boxes here, common open space and open space, well, 64P has changed hands. And who knows what's going on with?
That's-
64P.
Isn't that their retention basin?
It may be, and that is allowed, but it could be part of that.
Yeah.
It is.
It is allowed, or it is?
It is part of the detention system.
That's right, right. So, again, the town was supposed to get, on this one, we reversed it, where the town was going to own the, get the land, and the conservation trust was going to hold this conservation restriction. I think they ended up, maybe, there was some talk about them going to use homeowners association, but I don't know who they are, I don't know if they did it.
That's Edgewater.
That's right, that's no, that's okay, but if that's Edgewater, why was it nine years later? Because Edgewater came in, in 2014. So there's Lakeside with the co-owner. Or maybe it's the, perhaps Nockegg Village condominium is the homeowners association?
Yes.
And then Edgewater, okay. And who's Edgewater? I don't know, but originally, the, the site plan referred to to this as a separate parcel. I don't believe there was any communication between them and the, and why would they sell it to a- I don't believe there was any communication between them and the, and why would they sell it to a? Well, obviously, a construction company. When it's designated as open space, no money, no monitoring, no. I I don't know if there's a conservation restriction because we don't have access to the town records.
Uh, there is a conservation restriction on the fifteen acres.
Okay.
Which is held by the commission.
Which is held by the commission. So in that case, it would be up to the commission to do annual monitoring to see if, but they don't, again, don't have the bandwidth. And I, as far as I know, nine thousand dollars was never given to this, to the town. I could be wrong, but I don't believe so.
Was it, Marshall?
The the question, the question regarding the um, which I I've tried to get out of the folks at Edgewater is. Verification that the um. Open space is available not only to the residents of House Court, but also to the public at large. And, you know, I I've asked the developer on numerous occasions and um. You know, um, never received a response, but I I will also note that the the commission has never issued. A certificate of compliance for the development, so there's still an outstanding lien against the, I guess it's Edgewater. For the property as a whole.
And quickly, there's um, Bray Ave, Bray Ave, we did because we were trying to protect riverfront. That goes there um, up and under Williams Road. I have no idea what's going on there, it was, I know it did, it it was recorded with the town, so they did convey the land to the town correctly. Now, if we go back here to. Uh, to House Court, I I don't, I understood that the land was going to be conveyed to the Conservation Commission, I mean, I'm sorry, to the land trust. That obviously happened, or I misunderstood, perhaps I don't remember.
It did not happen.
It did not happen. So Bray Ave, the land was conveyed to the Conservation Commission. I don't, we didn't ask for money. You know, shame on us, we didn't ask for money. There's no conservation restriction on it, it just belongs to the town.
Well.
Go ahead.
Let me just say that there are certain stipulations as part of the um.
Okay.
Grant to the the conservation restriction there is to the town. Which is something that, you know, this was before my time, um, I would never accept in the future because it it totally limits. The town's ability to utilize the property.
Right. Again, I mean, there were different reasons for why we want to do this. At that, this one, we weren't considering public access, we just wanted to keep those houses off the brook. So maybe there's another mechanism for doing that than this.
Can I interrupt? My name is Ed McSweney, and I am part owner of Bray Ave. Is is it proper for me to talk right now, Roger?
Um, if you can have information related to what Lorraine is discussing?
I think I do.
That help?
First of all. When we purchased that property, the land had already been transferred to the town. And as far as the ownership part of it. What the town actually inhabited on Bray Ave was half the road. And we have assumed all the cost to complete that road. So from a developer point of view, we have picked up more than our fair share of the cost, and we plan to execute it fully. So I just want to make sure that if we're describing Bray Ave, we talk about all the facts. Meaning when the town took it and they took the legal responsibility, they also took half ownership of the land. That's how the original owners had set it up and the town accepted it. We now have a taskbook account where every time we sell a house, in fact, we're gonna be talking about it later today. We put eight thousand dollars into a reserve, so when the last house is sold, we'll have sixty-four thousand dollars. And from that, forty thousand is going to repave the road once again for the final topping. Half that road is owned by the town, so technically, we shouldn't even be doing that, but we are doing that. So when we're talking Bray Ave, there's, I think there's some facts there, and I can go into a lot more of them, but I won't at this point in time. But we took on that responsibility and as developers, I think we're more than exceeding what the town, I I clearly understands what we're doing. Both from the legal and the paperwork that we've cleared up. The paperwork that we took over, how the documentation was, let's just say it wasn't all that clean. And we've spent thousands of dollars cleaning it up as we've basically been building and selling the homes. And where we stand with the homes right now. We have now, we basically have under agreement, there's nine homes, we have homes six and seven under agreement. We are gonna be starting the new foundations for the last two homes, eight and nine, and they're both under agreement. So we, we, I think we've done a good job in Bray Ave, and and at that point, I'll stop, and I'll be happy to take questions.
And I'd be happy to speak with you um, separate from this meeting, I I'd like to understand, as I said, we lost track, there've been multiple owners. We don't have a good system for tracking all of this.
But I think what Ed was bringing up isn't relevant to what you were talking about.
Not really.
Our issue is about the land that was given to the town before and what were the conditions. You know, what what benefit did the town get from other than to protect, you know, you you did it because you wanted to protect. You know, the homes not going against the river, that was in the, from the old developer, then Ed came in and assumed. This thing that the town already owned this land that we can do nothing with. And that was a bad deal to begin with for the town, and I think that's what this issue is about. How should we be dealing with these? Lands that are conservation lands that, you know, you know, are, that the developer wants to be restricted.
Yeah, I think we need to start in the beginning of all this, of that, I think we needed to look at that bylaw. The open space and residential bylaw and tighten it up, we've had years of experience now, and it could be amended to make it. Better than it is. Just quickly, at the very end, um, we were trying to save a section of the Midstate Trail up off of Holt Road. This was all verbal, again, shame on us, he kept telling us he was gonna give us this yellow lot so that we could keep the trail out of people's yards. The way that it ended up is he went bankrupt and the land got torn apart. He got a couple of houses in there, and that was it, you know, now, again, it's back up for development. You know, with a new owner. And so that was, that was the loosest, least effective one. Um, one thing I did notice is that um. When I was looking at the, at the property cards. And these are four different pieces of property. The use description is very telling to me, but it but it's different depending upon. Who owns it, um, and I don't understand why it's, sometimes it's different. And I I just put this here to illustrate that we need to make this um, more consistent, we need to have better definitions, better use. Descriptions, um, and make sure that the information is up to date. For instance, the very bottom one, um, this is the top, this is Mount Watetuk, the one that says owners, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. With the co-owner is the Department of Conservation and Recreation, there are four other owners which are not represented on this. So there's no way to trace back if there's, you know, when we're all gone, we're dead, who's gonna remember if these things aren't documented properly? Um, I just put a couple of documents in here. I have others, I've been very distracted, so I apologize, this is a little bit loose, but. There's a lot of, there's a lot of material and a lot of support material that we can offer and bring to the table to kind of look at. I have questions about your um, your your laws, your fifteen. Your five point one, five point thirteen regulations.
Yeah.
In terms of how effective they are. And I have specific comments about your application, but I know today is not the day to talk about that application.
Right, not till later.
Any question?
But if there are things as far as the bylaw, then that can um, get it to us and we can um, get it to the bylaw review committee.
No, I read that five point thirteen this afternoon, and yes, I see there's some. It does raise a number of questions in a few places.
Yeah. It was, it was a good start, you know, it was. And then we tested it a few times, and you know, so it really needs to be tweaked.
Yeah.
All right.
Because it's a great concept, you just got to make it work. Okay. Done. Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, Lorraine. We can move on to our. Next segment of the agenda is open discussion, do we have anybody that's here for open discussion? I guess raise your hand or. Cat. Okay.
Roger, should we approve some minutes while we have minutes before the hearing?
Um. I think we're getting close to seven fifteen is, do we have time or can we just move on with our uh, the A and Rs? I think we have a couple of people here.
We have time for something.
Okay. Oh, we can start the A and Rs either, either way. Are you able to share the minutes?
Me, you want me to?
Yeah, can you? I can. Here, how to share the screen?
Be able to do it.
Want to do anything else here?
Okay, so these are from the November eighteenth, did anybody have? Any comments or issues or changes?
I didn't.
No?
Right, uh. They entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Of November eighteenth. Okay, with a roll call vote. Richard Wright?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Larry Dugrow?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt?
Yes.
So the motion carries.
Do you want me to pull the next one up, or do you want to?
Um, why don't we get the the people that are here for the A and Rs? Um, I think we have uh, Mr. Zoc for Hosley Road?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, can, you want to uh, share your screen, do you have the drawing?
I I don't have it on my screen here, no, I don't.
Uh, we have it for a second.
Yes. Oh, that's, that's an old one, that's an old one.
That's, that's what was distributed.
Yeah, that's, that's an old one.
Do you have something more recent than? Then, okay, um, yeah, uh, hold on a second, that's what the, that's what got posted, um, let me. Back and find your other one here.
The other one just shows a long, narrow strip.
Yes.
Is this the one that we looked at?
Yeah, just just bear with me a moment, I get the uh. The files here.
Roger, did you just pull the one off of the website?
I did, yeah, let me uh, find the correct one here. Go back. All right. Is that the correct one? Looks like.
I see the form.
Okay.
Bingo.
All right.
That's the one.
Uh. Let's see if I can, you know. Well, go ahead, I'll uh, walk you down as you need.
Okay, um, so basically, the Kozakowskis had, I think it was last year, had sold the house at the end of Hosley Road that you can see on the corner of the plan. Uh, they sold, they sold that lot to Mr. Walker, since then, um, the Kozakowskis want to sell Mr. Walker. This eighty-four foot wide strip that connects the back of Mr. Walker's property all the way to the railroad. I believe he wanted it for access for snowmobiles or hiking or something. And the Kozakowskis still own fifty-five acres with frontage on Gardner Road just up from the gas station. Why eighty-four feet wide? I have no idea, that's, that's, that's what they came up with, so.
Um, and that's the railroad property?
Up in the far right, yeah.
Yeah, and. Oh, I guess that's, that's their business whether they'll allow access on it or not, I guess, it's uh.
Yeah, that's, I I didn't think there were gonna be rails still there, but there are still rails on the ground.
Yeah, I don't know if that's intended for the rail trail or not, but uh.
I have no idea, yeah. It's quite, it's quite overgrown, but.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
And so that is coming off of which property?
It's coming off of um, uh, lot seven A on Sessos Map seventeen.
Yeah, where my cursor is then?
Uh, yes.
The dotted line in the middle is the town line?
No, it's, I I I just noticed that while I was waiting, it's a glitch when it was scanned, must have been something on the glass of the scanner. That that happened one other time to me, too. That, that happened one other time to me, too. That's, that's, that's not there, ignore that.
Town line is down here.
Yeah, it's like, like the bottom left corner of the plan, like.
Yeah. Sometimes I have the ability to rotate these and sometimes not, it depends on how it's accessed, I guess. Um. All right.
Orient me north and south, please, from the plan.
North, north would be the top of the plan.
Um. Towards the left as it's looked on the screen, is it?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, okay. There's the arrow.
Yeah.
So. And obviously, the, the remaining land is, is, still meets the requirements.
Yes, it's 50, 55 acres and uh, what was it say? And over 500 feet of frontage on, on 101.
Yeah, so we're not, oh, here's the, the plan here.
Yeah.
All right. Which, oh, the access is where my cursor is, along 101.
I don't, I don't see a cursor, but yeah, if you look at the, in the, in the, in the corner of the plan, the locus, the locus back, you can kind of, you can kind of picture.
Okay. So Kozakowski owns this land here, so that you take a lot from it, referring it to.
Uh. Mr. Walker. Yep.
Is, do they own both sides? They own both sides?
Of that strip? No, the Manadok Trust.
Oh, I got you.
On the other side, yeah. All the way to Wompanoag.
All right. Okay.
All right. Anyone have any further questions? Comments?
Nope.
No? Okay.
Certainly not a subdivision, it's kind of a weird thing, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, make a motion to that it's, that it is not a subdivision and that the, the lot meets, both lots still meet the requirements for the lot in the district that they're in.
Make a motion.
Yep.
Second that? Richard, was that a second?
No, it was a motion.
Oh, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, the roll call votes. Richard Wright?
Yes.
Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt, yes. Um, so give us a couple of days, get them, get people in to sign the Mylar. And Heather will let you know when it's ready.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next we have an A and R for 27 Main Street. Is that you, Richard?
It's me.
You want to, we'll note that you have left the meeting at 7:26?
I withdraw the, on the board, but I'll answer any questions because the wife is on vacation.
Oh, you're allowed to answer questions then?
I hope so.
Okay, do we?
It's just a lot, it's just a lot line.
Okay, do we have Mr. Graz present this to us? Is that while he's on here?
Yes, I can explain the, the plan to you and, Richard, you can add the color commentary to it.
Yeah.
I can put my plan over there if you want.
I will attempt to let you share. Let's see, let me get this on. For a second, there we go. Can you share your screen now?
Uh, let's see.
There you go, looks like you're working.
Um, can you see that or not?
I can see it.
Okay. All right, good. So, basically, we're doing a boundary line adjustment. We have an existing lot here at 27 Main Street. That lot boundary came south, went west, south again, east, and then followed this dash line that we labeled existing property line to be extinguished here. What we want to do now is get rid of this dash line, labeled line to be extinguished, and put the new rear lot line for this 27 Main Street right across here behind the building. So that will make the house lot a little smaller and make the this lot 121 larger. And Richard could probably explain why you want to do that, we just made the lines.
Any questions? I can answer them.
I guess to, to to quote Paul, why are you doing it?
Richard asked you a question.
Yeah, Richard, can you?
What's, what's the question?
Why, why are you changing a lot line?
Because I want to sell a lot, Main Street, 27 Main Street.
Yeah. And so, and, and so the rest of the lot will just go into this, the other lot that's behind it, making it one contiguous.
One, one lot on, on Maple Ave.
All right.
I think it meets the, I think it meets the requirements of an A and R.
It, and it does.
So.
All right, can you? Mr. Graz, could you just read us the the dimensions that are remaining of the two lots?
Sure, we have so the Main Street, the Lot 123. It's gonna have a remaining frontage. It had frontages on both roads before on Maple Ave. And now it's just gonna have the frontage on Main Street, so it'd be the 14689. And the area is gonna be 28,848. And we're in the Village Center.
Okay.
So our requirements are zero square free feet, 20 foot of frontage. And the new lot down oh, I should mention the rear setback is zero, so we still have, we still have room to get behind the building there. And the other lot, Lot 121 is getting larger, going to 110.2 feet on frontage and 42,115 square feet on the area.
Okay. Question I have on the, the Main Street lot. The use of that building is? Richard or Paul?
Yeah, Richard, I believe it's just residential, right, or?
It's residential, three-family house, yeah.
So you've got sufficient parking for that?
It, it has been for years, yes.
So, so by remove, reducing the property, we're not affecting?
Not encroaching the property, parking at all.
Mm-hmm, okay. It's and, and as far as access for the fire department around the building and such, the doesn't.
Nothing's changed in the history of the property.
Okay.
I think this is rather straightforward. I have no objections, but I'd be interested if there's any comment from the from others.
I have no issue with it either.
I agree. I'll make a motion to approve the A and R.
I'll second that. Do a roll call vote, the, the motion is that it does not is not a subdivision. And that the remaining lots as proposed meet the requirements of frontage in lot area.
Roger, do we have to ask if there's any public comment?
No.
Okay, all right.
Not a public hearing. I don't see anyone raising their hand as a chat, so the roll call vote. Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Walt Meisner? Walt?
Yes, I said yes.
Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt, yes, so it, motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And all right. Other new business, we have site plan review for Young Road Green Ventures. And we have the applicant on, on hand here?
Yes, sir, I'm right here.
Okay, Chris, yeah, I think I distributed the correspondence from today to all members, so the statuses were in pursuit of peer review services to review the site plan, the drainage septic, and I, you've got those two have, we've had comments, or we've gotten comments from the Board of Health where I guess any day now we'll get the comments, the conditions from Conservation Commission. So the peer review will be for those items and the LID application. And as far as the scenic road permit, as you indicated that there were no trees to be removed, I think it will ask, confer with the board, but the request that mutual agreement between applicant and the board that we extend the timeframe for having a public hearing and until future, until we, the, the conditions change that a scenic road permit here would be required. And if it is, we could either do it at some point in the future or in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen's special permit. Any board members have any comment on that?
No comments. Well, when, when would you figure it, we would be holding this site plan review at the next point meeting?
As we get, I think, hopefully for the next meeting, we have a proposal for peer review services. We have Time Bond responded that they would submit a proposal. Western and Sampson said they were too busy. Those are the two firms that the town has engagement with. The applicant is welcome to submit a, a firm of their choice for consideration. So if you would like to do that, please go ahead. But that's where we stand.
No, I, I am not completely familiar with this process. Is the peer review something that is absolutely necessary? Is there anything in the, the original engineering that you don't understand or can be clarified? We have Jack Sullivan here to prevent, to present tonight.
Okay, it's I think at least the LID bylaw, we do have to get outside engineering services to review it. The board does not have the expertise to review a LID application. And I know your other system designs are are not too extensive or complicated. And we do have review of we'll have comments from, of those two systems from other boards.
Could I just ask a question on that?
Sure.
Okay, my name's Jack Sullivan, I'm the project engineer. And for the septic system, the flows that are gonna come into this system are less than a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling. So it's basically just a gravity septic system with 200 gallons per day of flow, which is less than most of your single-family homes. In the drainage system, really is just a collection system off the roof that goes into underground infiltration chambers. It's, it's very simple, it's not like a large-scale commercial septic or drainage system. So it seemed like, if, I wasn't sure if the Board of Health took a look at the plans and said, yeah, this, this looks pretty straightforward, or if there was a decision that it looks somehow more complex and had to be sent out.
I do have the comments from them. I believe I sent them off to you, but perhaps not, if you, no, let's where are they else bringing up your application? Is this the current plan?
That, that is the current plan.
Okay. All right. And since you submitted this, you did submit to the town your application and you're in discussion for the host agreement, is that correct?
Chris, you're muted if you can answer that.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I'm sorry, what was that question again?
Since you submitted the site plan review application, and so you have submitted with the town the application for Since you submitted the site plan review application, such you have submitted with the town, the application for host agreement.
Yes, our meeting is tomorrow night with the MRT.
Okay.
I guess we're just trying to get some clarification on why we think a peer review is needed for such a small project.
That's understood. And I would.
My.
LID, we do. And again, once we had a discussion about what board members feel on the peer review of the of the other items. No comments from other board members or?
No comments from me.
Okay.
I would just add to the only, I think, to answer your question, the reason we need peer review is you explained what kind of a septic system is. We on this board have to have a a third party engineer expert confirm what you said. And we on this board aren't qualified to know what you're saying. We believe you, but we have to have that validated by a third party.
Okay, wasn't sure if the health department would do that when we submit for the septic application if if Neshoba Valley reviews it and then approves it.
Not necessarily.
If I may, Marshall Dennis, does this, there's no, apparently no requirements in the lid by law to require peer review. I mean, this is, this is like a house.
It is, it's, it made it is very, very straightforward.
I mean, the Conservation Commission today issued its order of conditions for the project. It's, it's it's not a heavy lift.
Okay, so I, are you saying then that you are confident in the commission's review of this that is satisfactory?
And that I'm real willing to rely upon, you know, others with permit granting authority over the project to be responsible for their areas of expertise, including the Board of Health.
Roger, can I suggest that we go on with the presentation and then maybe decide afterwards?
Sure. Sure. Chris and do you want to give us a brief overview of this?
Yeah, and and as far as reading the plans, I'm not an engineer by any means, but I can give you the the scope of the project. It's, it's a marijuana grow facility. As you can see in here, you see the two blocks, one is phase one and one says phase two. Phase one is approximately three thousand square feet. Depending on financing and budget, we may just start with phase one, which is the three thousand square feet and add phase two later, but we are seeking approval for the whole for the whole project in one, you know, in one fell swoop, so we don't have to go back through planning, zoning and, you know, getting all of the the other committees. So we're we're shooting for the five thousand square feet to be approved in one shot. It's, it's, like I said, it's going to be a five thousand square feet tier one growth facility. The the building itself is seventy feet by, I believe, forty or thirty feet. Two story designed to look. My original plan was I would like to have have it look like a barn with no windows or anything like that, but it looks more. The final plan actually looks more like a house. It wouldn't sit out of place in the in the neighborhood. You won't really be able to see it much from the road. I mean, if there's, if there's, is there anything else, any other questions anyone has about it that I can answer for you?
Your your total square footage, it final build out would be under seventy-five hundred square feet?
Yes, hi.
Will actually be right around five thousand square feet and actually my my architect Casey is here also.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Casey Dagger, five three. The total square footage is just under six thousand square feet, so it's just, it's like fifty-eight hundred square feet just from rough gross square footage. And I say it's under six thousand because they do have a small shed that they're building and then they're doing an outside wood burner boil, like a burner to for their boiler system. So that's also included in their square footage, their total.
I I guess where I was leading to was anything over seventy-five hundred square feet, Massachusetts would require a fire suppression system.
Correct, and they actually are going to be fire suppressing anyway, but yeah.
And how is that system configured? Is that a water system where you need a a cistern and such?
That will be a water system.
And where would the water come from?
From the onside well.
Is that indicated on the plan where the cistern would be?
I know, I know Casey is having some internet issues with her connectivity. No, Casey, we can't hear you. I don't know if you're muted.
Hello?
Oh, I can hear you now.
So we haven't had the fire protection designed yet. We're still in the process of doing that because we are into the seventy-five hundred square foot. I was just starting to talk to the client about whether he wanted to or not. And he wants to, so we haven't located the cistern yet.
Yeah.
I don't know if you heard me.
I just say my my experience has been that the the initial filling of the cisterns, you you bring in a tanker of water. You don't rely on your wells to fill it. You rely on your well to top it off periodically for reparation and such, but
yeah.
Initial initial filling is done by bringing water in.
Right, and the other thing too is we have to decide which areas, what, because we don't need to do the whole facility, which areas we would want to fire suppress. It probably won't be the whole facility. So that's kind of our our next step, but if there's any other architectural questions.
The right I might have is site lighting and the exterior lighting.
As far as exterior lighting, we, I have talked with Lieutenant Conrad, he had some questions about lighting, security and such. The, when when he looked at the final security plan, there was no, there was no light posts or anything like that. The reason for that not on this plan, there was a separate security plan for this facility. There will be cameras all the way around the facility on each corner. It covers pretty much the whole property. Now, the the inherent problem with lighting is it interferes with the cameras. So what would the the design concept that the security game company came up with? On the cameras around the corner. When when you have the lighting behind the camera, anyone pulling into the driveway, you can see facial recognition. You can see the vehicle make, model, color, license plate numbers, et cetera. That was the, so all of the lighting that is on the building will be on motion detectors. They will be facing outwards and downwards so they can capture anything on video that that comes into there. Any any light escaping from the building itself, there won't be any, any, everything will be. Any of the lighting from inside the building will not be able to be seen outside, and there will be minimal lighting on the outside of the building.
Okay. Just a concern that, you know, the dark sky requirements and that this is a very rural area.
Oh, absolutely.
And if if you're out there at night on a clear night, you will see more stars than you've ever seen if you're from Eastern Mass or something. As, you know, that will be a concern that we don't interfere with that.
The intent of the where this building is cited and how this was designed is that we don't want anybody to know that it's here.
You put as discreet as possible. That was was our original intent.
It seems like you've achieved that.
And Roger, if I have any input with the with the hardware store, we did the same thing with the lighting here. We had to do do a lot of adjustments to be able to pick up license plates and people and whatnot on our property also.
All right. I can interrupt just for a second, Lindsay, with the record show that Richard returned to the meeting?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead. Casey, go ahead.
So I just didn't, you know, Jack can probably go into more of the site plan, but the access to the site is where the current access is today, which is where the like that gravel road is, and I'm not sure if anybody knows the site or is familiar with.
What is the extent of the of the clearing that was done? I know a lot of it's grown back in low growth at this point, but is that in your plan here?
I am not sure. Oh, Casey, you want to take that?
It's shown, it's shown on sheet one.
It might be shown on the existing plan.
Yep, there it is. So there's a gravel driveway that exists now into the site. The rest of the site is wooded. And as Casey was saying, we've, we we kept the proposed driveway in the same location as the existing gravel drive. And out at the street line of Young Road, it's it's twelve feet wide and we're maintaining twelve feet at the site entrance. So we tried to mimic that. There's no street trees that would have to be cut, and there's no public trees that would have to be cut to accommodate the driveway since we're using the existing curb cut access to the site.
Are you going to be cutting any of the trees that are there that are currently there? Are you going to be clearing, you know, as you?
The the only trees that we would be clearing is within the private property itself, within the limited work line, but nothing within within the town right away.
So Jess, can you, do you have control of this map? Can you zoom in on it or?
Sure.
Roger has, sorry, Roger, I wasn't sure who had it.
That zoomed in too much or?
No, that's okay. I'm just trying to see, I'm just trying to get a feel for how much clearing it's going to be. They're going to be clearing.
Yeah, we're basically going like five or six feet each side of the driveway. And then we we show some plantings to be put back along the side of the driveway, evergreen type trees to be planted. We tried to keep our limit of work very tight when we went before the Conservation Commission. We only wanted to clear what was absolutely needed to construct the driveway, the sidewalks, and then do transitional site grading, accommodate the septic system and drainage system, and that's about it. We tried to keep as many trees as we could possible.
I mean, originally, it looks that the previous owner, it looked like they had gone in and actually clear cut the lot, Lindsay. It it's it's in like the shape of a V going in from the road. You can see the existing, you know, the the really tall trees. And then in the front of the property is like the ten year, you know, ten year scrub growth, I would call it. I would actually like to leave as much of that there as possible. I'd like to do as little cutting as possible. Besides filtering light, it's going to, it will filter noise, keep the sight line down. There are, there are a lot of advantages to keeping that lot as wooded as possible.
There was originally planned for a single family house on the site, so it looked like the previous owner cleared the lot at that point when he got his conservation approval and whatnot.
I don't know if any of that was done or not. It just sort of started getting cut. I remember that.
You're right. May I speak? It was on Concomit, we shut them down because they breached the orders of conditions. But basically, that's exactly what happened. They went in, they cleared the lot. So what's there is successional growth.
Yeah.
Ten or twelve years old.
Yeah. My comment on that is, and especially along, you know, Young Road and Tuckerman and such, that if you get a little bit of wet snow, the birch trees tend to fall over very quickly along that area. My concern is that while those trees are small, perhaps that could be addressed that you know, improvement would be trees that are more scenic.
They are mostly evergreen.
Yeah.
You know, white pine.
Yeah.
Or spruce that that is growing. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the species, but there is actually very little birch.
Yeah.
It used to be the pole pine that was artificially planted by a tree farm someone was going to for whatever reason. So it was very unnatural before they cut it because they cut it and it returned with whatever was in the area, and it's in a more natural state now than it was originally.
Yes, absolutely. It does look a lot more naturally, albeit the growth is a lot smaller.
All right, and there were some isolated wetlands that Conservation Commission addressed that touch.
Yep, there there was a small isolated wetland that will be filling. Conservation approved that. With our original submittal to conservation, we had showed a replication area, but both the state and the local Conservation Commission thought it might do there'd be more of an impact trying to create that replication area and then just leave it natural. So bottom line is, we were given permission to fill in that isolated wetland without any sort of replication. It's just a small little pocket.
Can I ask, this might be a silly question. I know everything's indoors, but is there going to be any smell associated with it?
On the way the filtration systems are set up, I know everybody has this thought in their mind that when you have a grow, it's, you know, it smells awful. There is, there is not as much smell as you would actually think or have been led to believe there is. But the anything contained in within the building, there will be carbon filtration, you know, for inner air, you know, air exchange. There, the doors are sealed. There is little chance of anything getting out.
So no, there shouldn't be?
There should be none.
I have a question on that, and it's more of a general question for the industry, but you know, we hear from that systems don't allow any odors to get outside, but if we, if there were to be a complaint in the neighborhood of an odor, how do you determine where the odor is coming from? How would you determine that it wasn't coming from your facility?
Well, after after speaking with the, you know, some of the residents in the area that grow their own, how would we determine if there is the smell coming from them? Is the smell coming?
Yeah. Is there a way to do that?
Honestly, I don't know. I can't answer that, you know, intelligently.
I just wondering if if that's a a question has come up with other facilities of how do you determine that it's not coming from your facility?
A good way, you go stand outside and see which smell. Being honest, do you smell it outside?
You know, one would think that would be pretty obvious.
As to what? As to where it was coming from?
Exactly.
If you're a couple of, couple of lots away and and you smell it, how do you, you know?
Are there any other marijuana growing facilities in the area?
Are there any other marijuana growing facilities in the area?
Yes, there are. None have had it. None of them had any odor complaints.
Yeah.
So how many employees will be coming and going from here?
At the very outset, myself and my partner, we are the only two as of right now.
That you're, you're going to be running the whole operation?
Yes. Once, when you, when you're first beginning with this, this is not, it's, it's not rocket science. It really isn't. We have to start from seed. So we'll be starting all the seeds. We don't need employees to babysit the seeds. They get watered twice a day. They have their light schedule, which is very regimented and automated. What, how many, how many employees do we really need at the beginning? We, we really don't. At full capacity, then we'll have to see, I mean, possibly four or five, but that, that would be about it.
Is there any full-time security that stays when nobody's there or?
The security system is monitored by a third-party company. Ashburnham Police will have full access to the cameras in the facility and outside the facility. The alarms, you know, if anything does go off, it would notify us immediately. We may put a manager in there for, you know, eight to five business hours. You know, they can accept deliveries and such, or, you know, if, if we do get deliveries, it, it depends. That has not been 100% worked out yet as to how we're going to set that up.
I'm sorry to tell you that tomorrow night when you give your presentation, you're going to get all these questions all over again.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm actually, I, I do, I, I'll be honest with you, I have a lot of butterflies, you know.
And that's why I'm, I'm not asking any questions. I'm on the MRT.
No, not, not at all. Ask away. If there's anything you want to know, by all means.
Most of the planning board issues are, are just about the, the property and Yeah. the septic systems and water systems and all those kinds of setbacks and that. And I think we've covered that, so. Will you have a generator? In case you have power loss?
Yes, there will be. Okay, the, the way, I'll, I'll give you a little rundown of the way things are set up. One of the reasons we went with a, now, all of the, all of the way, with the concept that came up, all of these systems are designed to work in conjunction with each other. Starting off with the, the outside boiler, we'll actually be using a wood-fired boiler. It's a natural resource, very abundant, renewable. That boiler has a propane backup. So let's say something fails with that propane can kick in, that will, that will take the, the load. Now, being that we have propane, the generator will also be propane. So that will, you know, if we do lose power, that will be an instantaneous kick-on generator. So there will be no loss of, no loss of power, communication, any, anything to that effect. So all of these systems have been designed to work in conjunction with each other.
And the wood burning boiler, how about emissions from, from that? Those can be quite annoying to neighbors. Has that issue been resolved with those?
And they actually burn very clean from all of the specs that I've seen. The boiler that we chose, emissions are comparable to that of an oil-fired furnace. Or oil-fired burner, boiler, I should say.
And delivery of wood would be?
Delivery of wood would be just like it would be to anybody else's house. They bring it in in a dump truck, dump it and they take off.
And then you have to get it around to the, to the boiler.
Yep, I, then I got to put my back into work and stack it. Yeah, I know it sounds like a lot of fun, but yeah, it's the way it works. Maybe I will hire somebody to do that. So add an employee.
I don't know if we ever asked anybody to have a designated spot on the site plan for wood storage.
I have one question. So you have one entrance, one exit, and it's monitored. Correct?
Correct. We have, there is.
Anything going in and out is going to be monitored. So if there's any questions with the police or fire or anybody else, it's going to be answered.
Yes, absolutely.
That's all I need to know.
Yep, there, the main entrance in the front, which is just a standard, you know, steel door. Everything is on camera. There will be on the, if you look on the left side of the plan, where it says proposed two-story structure phase one, there is a door to the left-hand side. That is, that goes into a room that there. Think of it like a Sally Port. There's no.
Basically, anything that comes in that area is monitored.
Absolutely. Everything is on camera.
No matter where it goes, what happens, it's monitored.
It's, it's, it's monitored. It will be on camera.
Every door in the facility.
I'm happy with that.
Yeah, the only, the only place that is not on camera in this facility is the restroom.
Yeah, except for the.
Obvious, obvious.
I don't really want to.
Just clip through the rest of your drawings here.
Jack, is there anything that you wanted to cover several wise?
I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. The drainage system is pretty simple. We're just collecting the roof runoff, so there'll be roof drains that go underground and out to a drainage infiltration field consisting of Caltech units. And I'm tasked with demonstrating that I'm not increasing peak rates of runoff from the site in the post-development scenario. And I've done that. That's why we put in this drainage field so we can, we can store and infiltrate water on site. And I do have an emergency overflow for, for large storms. The septic system, the soil testing was done when the residential home was permitted or, or trying to be permitted. And it's all sand and it's a high groundwater table. We do have a domestic well. I've kept that 100 feet from the septic system. And like I said, it'll be a paved driveway. We have two conventional parking spaces. And we provided a van-accessible handicap parking space, even though we don't anticipate a need for the handicap. We thought under code, we should probably have one, even though this is, this facility is not open to the public in case there's an employee who's handicapped. We have that available on site. But that, that's pretty much it. We, like I said, I tried to keep the limit of work line tight on this project. The septic systems outside the 100-foot buffer to the wetlands, so that's compliant. And the, the siding of the building, we're over 100 feet from the side lot line. So we had to maintain at least 100 feet. We're in, we're over 100 feet away. So zoning-wise, we're compliant. We have drainage. We have a, a septic system that will meet approval. And the rest of it is really just like a glorified single-family house project with driveway. There'll be landscape plantings outside the building that look like just what's outside your home. You know, a mix of plants and shrubs. I think one of the big things was this, where this is scenic road application, we just wanted to demonstrate there'd be no trees to be cut. So that, that's a concurrent hearing with this board. So that, that, I think that addresses a scenic road and where we're using the existing curb cut. We, and we have the same curb cut, same driveway location, no tree cutting. So I think from a scenic road permit perspective, we're in good shape there.
So this is, one of the guys, the backside here with your phase two.
Yes, that is, that's the proposed phase two, single story.
And then what, what you may see from the road?
Yes, this, from the, from the front, that is what, that is what it would look like.
Okay. Second floor? First floor?
Yes, that is correct.
No basement?
No basement. Yeah, I figured a concrete floor would be the simplest way to go. It just, it seemed to make sense rather than having, you know, a basement, which Russ is having to put flooring in. It just concrete painted surface, very low maintenance, absolutely the perfect way to go.
And works for you. Plumbing and such, minimal or?
I'm sorry?
Any plumbing that would need to be under the slab?
Uh, it would be very minimal.
Okay, so you can get out to your septic system without any issues with being under the slab?
Yes.
Okay. I myself don't have any more questions at this point. Any other board members?
No questions for me?
I have none.
I'm good.
Okay. Do we need a motion? But not at this point. I guess our discussion is if we need review services for review of the site plan, the septic well, storm drainage and the LID permit. But I think Marshall raised a question as to whether we need the site plan review at all. So I think we probably need to ask, we need to check into that. Certainly, or.
And Roger, we're still waiting on comments, correct, from Board of Health?
We have comments from the Board of Health. If I can bring those up.
That's okay. You don't have to pull them up. I'm sorry. I thought you said we were still waiting.
We have that. We, I guess, Marshall, you're, you're transmitting the order of conditions to us? Marshall? Kept away. Okay, well, I think he was clear on that and.
We have the order of conditions.
So, so we need to get the order of conditions and we need to have an opportunity to review the comments from Health Department because the other board members haven't done it. So it should be a pro forma type of thing at the next board meeting, I would think.
I'd also like, oh, sorry, Walt.
No, you go ahead, Lindsay.
I, I'd also just like to see the fire design as well. If you, you said that wasn't on the plan. You're still working that out?
Yeah, I mean, we won't have that ready for a while, to be honest.
That may never happen.
We usually just have that for permit, for building permit. I know that our, the fire protection engineers are still backed up right now that it's, you know.
Yeah, it's just the issue of, you know, of where the cisterns are located and how large they are.
And if it, honestly, if it is something that does, you know, if, if we go to fire protection, they say, oh yeah, it's going to be six months before we can design or implement anything. It may actually get scrapped from the design. So, you know, I, I wouldn't.
Is there a requirement of growing facilities at all?
It is not.
Not, okay.
This was something that I personally wanted, but if it is, if it's something that is going to hold up development, then we can also put it on the back burner and.
Yeah, so the system would be like a, on a residential side. It's pretty small.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're looking at square footage to be residential is growing facilities is like, what? Two people per, how many square feet? So, yeah, what I'm trying to say is, the, the building could be 20,000 square feet, but there's only two people in it.
Only going to be one person, so.
Exactly, okay.
The, actually, the I, I know it's not a requirement, but being that our crop is a high dollar, it's a high-dollar commodity. That's the bottom line. If, if the place caught on fire, I want the fire put out. It's, it's simple as that. That's what it comes down to is that we want to preserve that crop. God forbid anything happens.
Basically, you already have a watering system in there anyway, correct?
Correct.
Hit the override, let the sprinklers go, put the fire out.
Well, I mean, our, our watering system is not super high-tech. It's a hose in a bucket. We, nothing, when it comes to plant maintenance, nothing is automated. That is all done by touch, by feel, all by hand. You know, different plants grow at different rates. It, it, it's just like, you know, you have one that's, you know, growing 20% faster than the other, then you need to tend to it. And everything is done by hand. If, if a plant doesn't need water, it's not going to get it.
Exactly.
So it's, you know, it's more time-consuming. It's a little more labor-intensive, but that, it, there, there's no computer program that can do what a human can, when it can do.
Yeah.
And that's the way I feel about it. So everything is done by hand.
I'm good with that.
I think the questions you, we get or we see is, you know, people are concerned about the amount of water that you're going to use, take out of the ground, the amount of water going in. It's, it's a very small facility, but what's, is it, it's less than a house, you said?
Less than a house.
Yeah.
As, as far as watering a plant goes, each plant can take, you know, my, my partner has done some experimenting with how much water a plant takes. An average full-size plant takes about a half a gallon of water a day. Roughly. In the, and that's in the flowering stage. In the vegetative stage, you're talking a lot less. Quarter gallon, half gallon at most. And it's, it's not like we have thousands and thousands of plants either. It's a very small facility.
In comparison, you're a 33-acre lot.
Yeah, 33 acres.
And if you had, would you develop it as, as housing? How many houses would you have on that lot versus what your facility is going to use?
Exactly.
That's.
The proverbial drop in the bucket.
Yeah. Um.
Exactly.
Let's see. What timeframe would be for getting the LID reviewed? And see if we can get back for any other comments. Hopefully we've gotten any, but only police and fire, and I'm sure they'll be, you know, with your team tomorrow night, so.
Yes.
Any concerns they have will be addressed tomorrow night. I don't have any more questions. I don't believe anyone else says, is that correct?
Nope. Nope.
All right. Well, thank you. When we get everything, we may get you back on for meeting at the end of the month or if not, early February.
All right, sounds good.
Think you've got a longer road with other people than you do with us, so.
It's been, uh, it's been a process. Actually, I I believe I I met all of you at this meeting a year ago.
Yes.
When I first brought the plan to you and said, you know, is this a lot acceptable to to do something like this?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Thank, thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Casey, and thank you to all the board members.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good night, guys.
Do we have? I I guess I would propose that I contact Ty and Bond and and get some clarification from them on what it would take to do the L I D by law review application. Would that be a fair assessment?
I think so.
Yeah. Okay, I'll do that. Okay, so next on our, we'll move on to the next item. Here, Winchendon Road, the O S R D application.
Roger, this is Ed McSweeney. On the phone.
Yes. I think I have an updated status on our end is we've sent out a peer review is required for an O S R V permit, so I've sent that out to Ty and Bond. Um, as you, as I let you know that the other firm won't be submitting a response, so if you have another firm you would like to deal with.
I do have another firm talking with Chris Mossman from Throwbridge. So we will submit that information to Heather in the next couple of days if that's acceptable.
Um, is he currently involved in the project?
No, no, Chris is my engineer. This is a third party engineer.
Right.
So I asked Chris and, um, uh, the third party engineer will be tech to tech that we'd like to suggest.
All right, yes. They've they've worked with us.
Chris is familiar. He's not only familiar again, uh, helping him bring out, but Chris does work with them. In the town of, um, I know Westminster and I know in Sterling, so he's used to those folks representing towns. So we'll submit that information to Heather.
At this point, we're waiting comments from other town boards and committees. Anything else on on your part, Ed, that?
I I I have a couple of things, if I may. Obviously, earlier in tonight, uh, we had the guest speaker talking about open lands and so forth. The Five House project, um, from a sizing point of view, again, in February, Chris Mossman will be online and will go over the the plan, the driveway plan and the drainage plan. Uh, and you'll be able to see more accurately. There's a total of five houses. Two houses come under the A and R requirements. So the three houses are making up the, um, open space requirement development. And the real land of the four acres, um, and listening tonight, I'm I'm not sure, uh, obviously, uh, your guest speaker, she mentioned, um, obviously she mentioned Ray Al, but the other projects of being larger bodies of, um, land. I'm curious, um, when we, when we read the bylaws, I guess there's some gray area in there. We did, uh, we assumed that it would be going in the conservation. Part of that assumption too came from, uh, talking with our attorney who has done, in other towns, um, what you call open space residential development. A lot of towns categorize it on the cluster development, where you give, um, make sure that the parcel of land, if it will allow X number houses, obviously you can't develop more than that. The usually that land then is given back to conservation and for that, you're allowed as a developer to have, um, reduced frontages and lot sizes. As the encouragement to preserve the open space. In those towns, as my attorneys pointed out, he said, one of the reasons it does go to conservation is because of the, um, the legal issues and so forth, and as opposed to giving it back to the homeowners. We have asked Deb Phillips to start to look at our apostle, um, and we hope to have an answer from her prior to, uh, the February meeting. I'm not really sure at this point, how how do we handle that, Roger? I'm not sure which way we, because I know some members are saying, hey, it should be to the homeowners association. Some people then have said, you know, traditionally it's conservation. How are you going to assess the fees on it? I guess before we go too much further, we'd like to get a better feel for how our apostle, be it only four point four acres, uh, is going to get treated from a cost point of view and what requirements are going to be placed on us.
Good question. And we don't have any answers at this point. You know, what, is there any benefit of the town? Okay.
Like, can I make comment, Roger, and and respond to, I'm sorry, what is the name, your name? I can't see it.
My name is Ed McSweeney.
Hi, Ed. Yes, um, I I was, I was going to be prepared for the next meeting because I thought that's when this hearing was going to occur, but well, first of all, the the assumption that the Conservation Commission will want it is a little premature. They may not want it. Because there needs to be a proof of public benefit. And as we, as we looked at the application, where it seems not to be accessible to the public, it's just there for the use of the the neighborhood that you're building. We didn't see any access to the public, you know, through those lots. It's, they're pretty tight in there. We didn't understand the wings on the side. And I do have a document, which of course I cannot find right now. I'll send it to Roger later on, with specific concerns from two of the members of my committee, uh, three of them actually. And I can make those available to you. But you're right in that we need a a further con- conversation about how you can configure that and have it meet the bylaw requirements, the planning board's bylaw requirements, and accomplish the genuine protection of the land with a specific purpose and benefit for the public as well. Like, would there be a trail there? If you, if you just give it to the to the town and they don't have the mechanism for monitoring it, what can happen is that those lots, those property owners can gradually move into that void, thereby getting land they're not paying taxes on, because if you give it to the town, there's no more tax walls. So it's important that it be done correctly or not at all. It it's not a large amount of land. There is some potential benefit to it. And personally, I see that over time, as that area builds up, it could become a little neighborhood park. Right now, it's not really needed, but over time, that that's all going to infill. Or if it, there is a a lot of land behind it that has a, like a long skinny peninsula that goes out to Corey Hill Road. I don't even know if that's buildable. I mean, that'd be a, is that's a hammerhead lot? Uh, and whether or not they can even develop it, uh, would the town want to or a land trust or a conservation group want to look into purchasing that other piece of property in combination with your open space, it would make it, um, possibly a a corridor for people to walk or hike from Corey Hill Road to Main Street or Winchendon Road. So those things really have to be worked out. It's just not as easy as, oh, I have this extra land. You know, here you go. So as I was trying to say in my presentation, we try to think more carefully about how this land will be used, um, and if it can be properly stewed. You know, if this, we can have proper stewardship and monitoring of it. If we can't, our general recommendation is not to allow it. But again, it's a little premature. It's not up to me and and we're all sort of just chipping in right now. And trying to, I'm trying to refamiliarize myself with the the bylaw, the O S R D bylaw. I don't know how to accomplish this conversation. That's up to Roger, I suppose. How we can work together to figure this out. But I I'm sorry, I don't have the comments for you that we had specific.
Yeah, well, we weren't expecting those until
Right.
early February. Um, I just wanted, at least by the nineteenth, to get boards to acknowledge that they received the application and whether they'll have comments or not, because I know it's a short time period for boards to try to meet and some of them haven't met in a long while anyway.
I was just going to say, Ed, I think you're asking the right question, though, because, and I think as Lorraine expressed, it seems to me, at least the way it's currently configured, to be a very tough sell for this to be of value to the town. And, um, and and we also are very mindful of the fact that the town needs tax revenue. The town needs property to be owned and supported by the owners of that, of the property. The only comment that I would have, Ed, in is that, uh, in the plan that I saw, you know, we still haven't addressed the whole desire that we expressed at the last meeting, that, um, there'd be sidewalks and along, um, along Route twelve, that this is ultimately, we hope to reconnect to the downtown area since that property is in walking distance and the people you'll be selling it to will probably have kids that get picked up by school buses. And they'll, it's, um, I think that issue is the town, as the planning board previously expressed myself, and I know Richie's agreed that, you know, sidewalks was an issue that, you know, we wanted to see some, um,
No, I I can appre- my comment is, I think, for example, on the open land, how you've expressed that, hey, we're trying to revisit the projects that have been done in the past, but going forward, we want to make it clear in that there is a benefit for the town. I think that's great. From our point of view, we purchased a piece of land. I came in front of the board. That's kind of, again, it was about a year ago before Chris Mossman then started to do a lot of engineering and we've been busy uh, with the virus and so forth. I guess our point of view, my point of view and then my partner's point of view are real simple, is the O S R D is only allowing us one house. We have over six hundred and sixty feet of frontage, so we can literally have four A and R. A pool are not required. One of the hurdles was the driveway cuts. We've already talked to Chris Chamberlain. They'll approve the two driveway cuts and since your bylaw has your driveways. That's why we're trying to now understand the cost. So for example, when we understand what the board requirement is for the open land and the maintenance and the contribution and so forth. And for example, the sidewalks, uh, we've already had a quote on the sidewalks because of the, um, the ledge on the right hand, looking at the property on the right hand side and so forth, that cost is, we've had two bids basically come back, uh, around sixty five and seventy thousand dollars. And when we spread that over, plus I did do an informal survey. I went up the houses past the project going up towards Corey Hill and, uh, Lasher the Road, and there's like seven houses. I talked to five members, uh, the people living in there and this, and then the simple question I asked was, how often do you go walk down, um, Winchenton Road onto Main Street to the downtown area in a month? One person basically said they drive to the cemetery and then from there, they walk down on the right hand side, on the caution side. The other four people said, we've lived here a long time and we've never done that and we don't ever plan on doing that. So I guess from a development point of view, the profit of one house, it just might not be worth it. And that's now what I'm trying to grasp. We've spent a lot of money on the engineering, designing the plan, going in front of the, getting the plan approved by D O T, uh, having the public works people give their input. We already did that up ahead. But if the cost gets to a point, it's it's dollars and cents. We we might just withdraw it and just come in as simple for A and R lots. That's the point I'm trying to find out, instead of wasting the town's time and our time. That's why, um, even before we start to spend them, uh, you know, go forward and have publication in the paper and so forth. If if we realize the cost is just going to be so great, uh, we we will not go forward with the plan. So that's why I'm trying to grab that information as fast as I can get it. Because when we, when I read the O S R D, you know, we read the requirements, we obviously interpret it and the feedback we got, um, again, it it was in the past and was just informal feedback. We thought we'd meet the requirements. And and I guess I'm just thinking that maybe, uh, for future reference, uh, you might want to tighten up some some of those requirements so we, so developers like myself wouldn't waste your time on these small projects, that it it it'll make it clear that it's not worth, um, pursuing that.
Well, there are provisions to allow, you know, additional units and such, and, um, that's where the opportunity is.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing to us was if you look at the land and the frontage and stuff. I mean, if we, and when we don't, so we're not going that way, but I mean, the land support's basically close to nine houses. And that's the trade off. We said, hey, we'll do two N A R lots and we'll come in with three houses. And we'll leave the woods, uh, basically preserved. But if the cost gets to be so much for that cyst house, then we'll just, we'd like to, you know, we'll seriously think about trying to, um, we'll basically, um, re- remove the project and just basically file as A and R lots. That's why I'm real keen on, um, how and, um, the definition of what do you think the cost is for preserving that land? And I think those are all the right questions. But just as the town doesn't want to pursue and just take on a project, we don't want to keep going down the avenue and find out that the cost is going to be so much where basically it's not worth the, um, the cost of putting in a fifth house.
One of the things that could help and would have helped me, and I think it's it's required in the bylaw, is there, there was no, when I looked at the site plan, there was no detail for the land that the open space area, there were no top lines, there was no indication as to what kind of land it was, if there's any wetland, if there's any historical walls or stone structures. Um, and all of those are, need to be considered and and entered in in your application. I think that the applications themselves need to be a little bit need some work in terms of what's being. Um, need some work in terms of what's being asked. But but it is all spelled out in the bylaws. And so just to say, you know, just to draw a line and say. You know, all of this is just too vague for anyone to make a. An educated decision about what the value of that. That that is, it's too small for the state to be interested. Either a local land trust would be interested in marking it. Um, so it would take a little bit of time and a few phone calls to other people. Um, but basically, there's no, uh, no. No survey of what's really being offered. So it causes pause to say, oh, yeah, we'll do that because we've done that before and. It didn't always work out so well. So we really need more detail. It's just not in your in your application. So I can see.
Then Roger, could I ask, could you give me a a list of the details you want? For example, the wetlands, when Zach surveyors and Chris Mossman looked at the project. They went beyond where they're, where we're going to disturb the area. Uh, for the houses, uh, because they're well aware of, um, the Conservation Commission. Uh, so there are no wetlands that we're impacting and there are no wetlands within two or three hundred feet. Of the land that's being disturbed. Um, if 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 you want a topography. Um, of the backland that we're want, we're planning on not disturbing. Um, we can provide one of those. Um, and and if you could give me a list of what other questions, I guess what I'm asking is just that is, um. We'd like to know the detail that you really want us. To supply, uh, to the board for the meeting, you know, help us determine if we want to move forward. Now, part of the circulation of the plan, for example, we've talked quite a bit with Steve Nims about it and so forth, and we've answered. A lot of his questions. Um, obviously, Chris Conrad, we've had brief conversations unofficially as him being a resident of the area. And obviously, we've talked to Mr. Brown and stuff like that. But if there's, um, we assume that as circulation of the boards saw the plan. That was part of what the feedback that we would see. But if there's specific other questions you want. If you could provide us with that list, we'd be more than happy to. Um, be prepared to talk to them. Um, at in the February timeframe.
Roger and Ed, if you look at um, the bylaw number five thirteen six design process. There's under item A, there's a little description and discussion about identifying conservation areas. And that gives some details, the kinds of things that. If if I were in the position of the planning board, I would want to see clarified personally.
Well, on that note, just to let you know. The head of the conservation had sent us an email and Chris Mossman had given him the drain. He was specifically looking for the drainage and other drainage, um, information which we have supplied him. Um, and and he didn't make any other reference about the uh, land in the rear.
But it's a little bit more about.
Mr. Marshall is on.
Uh, he's not. I think he stepped away, but it's more than just wetlands. It's, if there are other types of resources. That conservation groups might be interested in. Is it good birding habitat? Is there a view? Um, there are elements aside from water issues. That that are taken into consideration when they determine whether something is worthy of conservation effort or not.
Well, I I did get that. Uh, tomorrow, we'll look at that list. I saw, I noted down what you referenced, so we'll be happy to look at that.
Page sixty-seven in the bylaws.
Yep.
And sixty-eight, sixty-eight and sixty-nine.
I suppose if there's anything that. Clearly doesn't apply to your. Location, then um, we can identify that and. You know, waive that requirement if it just fully doesn't apply. But I think a lot of things in here. May apply to some point. Um, just back when you met with us a month or two ago. I had asked a question about, uh, and this maybe. You know, viable access to that open space lot. Um, whoever's going to have stewardship of it would need. To determine whether, what degree of access they would need to it. Right now, it's, you know, a steep slope there on a curve. It's a. You know, if there were to be vehicle access in there for maintenance, cleanup, trash removal or whatever. You know, how does one get in there? I think that would be a. Or we, you know, good to know whoever has stewardship of it. That that's provided. What they need.
Uh, the plan was to have a, and it was more for a walking trail. It was not for. Uh, a vehicle and Chris was going to talk to that when we go into the detail in February.
Okay. Or whether there's a, you know, a right of way from the driveway or something that.
There would be a right of way. The town, the town bylaws require it. It'd be part of like an easement and it has to have at least twenty-four foot width. So it would be, it it would be a width of twenty-four feet.
Yeah, but don't forget the the whole issue of viability. And and that means it has to be practical and that people are actually going to use it. You don't put a, you could, you could give access to that land, but. If it's not realistic, that'll, people are going to. Go back there and, you know, walk around in a circle and walk off and then it doesn't have that viability and it doesn't have that. That value to the town. So, you know, I think that's the key question for me. What value does this have to the town and to the? And 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 to everybody here? Do we really want to go there?
Ed, would you mind giving me your contact information and if I can assist you and?
Yeah, my email, my, I'd, I'd, I'd love any input you could give me, please. Uh, it's ed dot McSweeney at yahoo dot com.
Ed dot McSweeney at yahoo dot com, okay.
Yeah, and McSweeney is M C S W E E N E Y.
Right, Roger, does that do it for uh? I I believe so. We want to. Have we, uh? Yeah, so Ed, we know we're, we'll get in touch with about that and.
No, I I'd like, um. I'll be happy to take any information. We'll do some more research on, uh. Uh, the articles that were called out on what pages and so forth and, uh, obviously, um, Detective Tech and stuff. Um, and and again, I've, I'm, right now, um. We're only interested in trying to do something that if it's a, if it's good for both the town and us as the developer. And it, and this might not be the right parcel. And at that point, before we go too further down. Um, we'd like to try to figure out. Uh, the break even point and then if it's not right, then we'll withdraw that and. Uh, basically look at just doing either a subdivision or just come back with simple A and R lots. And um. That's how we'll handle it and I do appreciate all your time and effort.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
I guess you're gonna hang on. I. I could.
Yep, for all business.
Interrupt you for a second and ask the board if you wouldn't mind just in a brief moment addressing your Bray Avenue. Releases. While you're on the line.
I'll, I'll be, I'd like to do it that way if you don't mind, but uh, it's up to the board.
I have no problem.
Thirty seconds. Oh, probably. Let's go. The answer is from Town Council is that, uh. As we've done in the past, uh, we can approve it on the condition of acceptance by Town Council. They're the ones that have the. Legal expertise, not us, so uh, that's all we're gonna do. If that's acceptable to you. Ed?
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah. If you're asking, is it acceptable that you'll accept it? Yeah, it's acceptable to me. Thank you. Do you, do you want me to explain to some of the board, do they understand what we're doing here, Roger, quickly?
Uh, if you can do it quickly, Ed.
All right, I'll do it quickly. So when we took over the project, there was no fifty-three G account set up. So what we agreed X number months ago. Um, we had sold the first house, but from the second house on. We had agreed to put into a passbook account that was supposed to get to the treasurer. But because of the covert, it only got as far as Deb Phillips and she's now the, um. Into her, she has an account set up for the town. So we basically deposit funds what we call into. Deb Phillips account and it's basically, she's holding the money. So today we have thirty-two thousand dollars in that account. What we're going to be doing now is, um, you're going to release six and seven. Uh, and that then will give us, um, there's eight and nine, two more lots afterwards and I'll talk quickly on that. We agreed that every time you release two lots, we will put in sixteen thousand, eight thousand per house. Um, so we're releasing these six and seven tonight. In the next three weeks, we will have, um, we've had buyers father houses. The houses will be completed and we. Will be selling the first one, mm, two and a half, three weeks from now. They, at the sale, our attorney keeps sixteen thousand, which he forwards. Into the account to Deb Phillips. And, uh, we will do it again. We're, um, starting to put the last two foundation make, we're. Starting to get ready to install them in about another week and a half. And when the first of those two houses sell, we'll put another sixteen thousand. Um, several months ago, we got a bid and and primarily what that money is for. Is Bray Ave. Um, when it's completed with the housing, we have an agreement with the town before we can, um. Request the town to take ownership of the road. We have to make sure that. Um, the last code of pavement is placed on the road. And that everything, meaning the manholes and so forth, the sidewalks and everything are in proper order. Um, we know we have to pave and put in the sidewalks. We had a bid from. P J Albert of forty-two thousand. We have sixty-four thousand will be in the account. And as we build the homes, we have been up to date. Talking with the third party engineer, Techtratech, he had pulled, he had requested us to fix a few things in the road. And so forth, and we've been doing that as we've been building the homes. Um, so, uh, we feel comfortable in the month of, depending on the weather, but if May is a good month, we'll do the final paving. And then we will have Steve Nims and we will have Detective Tech people along with Conservation. To make sure that we check all the boxes and that the project is a hundred percent completed. And then we'll be petitioning the town to take over, uh, the road. So that's what this money is going for. Any questions?
None.
None, no.
Be good.
I'm done. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, so I will make a motion that we. Approve. The request. Uh, subject to. Acceptance by Town Council.
I'll second it.
The roll call vote. Richard Wright?
Yes.
Lindsay Butler? Lindsay?
Yes, sorry.
Walt Meiser?
Yes.
Larry Vudrow?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt, yes. Okay. Our next item on the agenda.
Change of use eighty-four Main Street.
Eighty-four Main Street, yes. Seconds. And. Go. This is a community church. And. Can I try to talk with the building commissioner to get an understanding what they're really asking us to do? Um, their intention is to possibly rent out some of their spaces for other uses. Whether it be a business or restaurant or such. Um, it's in the Village Center Residential. A restaurant would require a special permit for use. That's what what was indicated on here. And also possibly offices and such. Read the letter. If it were to be a restaurant, the building code requirements. Are much different, so they would intend to keep the. Number of occupants in a restaurant under forty-nine. That would be a maximum number for determining. Parking requirements. You can ask me questions of a little more, I know. Um, but. Wasn't that? I don't see anyone.
I'm.
On the applicant online.
Roger, I I have no issue with it. Um, my big question to you, to the applicant. Is they do understand that it is a church, it's a not-for-profit. Piece of property, but once they rent it out to something that is profit generating, it does become taxable. Real estate. Or some portion of it becomes.
Some portion of it, yeah, I say.
And as long as they, I I I would just be, make sure, I would just question and suggest. They understand that.
As I say, you would be very familiar with that situation.
Yes, it happens to my business all the time.
All the time, yes. Okay.
And Roger, they do, they need to make sure they are within the bylaws of the parking requirements because. I have that problem down here on my property. So if it's a restaurant, it's, has to go with how many people seat and what happens down there. So it doesn't flow downhill.
There, yes, there's a.
Okay.
Requirements, you know, parking requirements for a restaurant. Um, are greater than for a church.
Or anything else.
I don't know what the capacity occupant. Posted occupancy of the church is and what that would gen, you know, require for parking. Um, I think the way our bylaw is, is that if the change of use. Doesn't result in. Additional parking beyond what the current use does. Um, then they don't need to add anything if, uh, the proposed use. Is greater than the existing use, then they need to make up the difference. Um, so I did, I don't know what their current situation is for. The occupancy, occupancy load of the church versus how much parking they currently have. Um, and whether that works for a restaurant. Other thing would come in if, uh, any of these other uses. Are concurrent with the church being used. How does that affect the parking requirements? If they share parking with, in the butter. If they share parking with, in the butter, how, how does that work with, uh, the timing of it? So, um, I think there's issues that they need to figure out what they're doing and present it to us. It's really, we don't have anything to review without that. Should give me a moment while I have the book open as far as business uses in the Village Center Residential portion. Professional services would be, uh, an allowed use, offices and allowed use. They haven't said it, but a, a store would be a special permit. So this different requirements, but a restaurant would require a special permit.
That's a special permit granted by the Board of Selectmen?
Planning Board for use.
Oh.
That would be us.
Okay.
Parking would maybe, depending on how it works out, may be a, the ZBA issue. Again, it's not strictly by the table because it's in the Village Center. We do allow, um, what's referenced is the Institute of Traffic Engineers latest edition. Um, so, and that's an option. Um, and if they propose anything that's um, another referenced source, we could consider that, that would substantiate what they're intending to do.
Okay.
Um, again, it, it, it kind of depends on if it's a concurrent use.
So is the plan for them to bring this to the board at the next meeting or a future meeting?
Um, I think we will reply to them as to what the procedures are.
Okay.
Um, you know, we have, as far as the detail, we have nothing to review. They haven't essentially presented anything. I think theirs is more of a, at this point, what our thoughts are and, and how they go about moving forward. Yes, that's, that's my understanding of what they're asking us to do. Uh, uh, their intention is to, um, have things in place so when they do have interested tenants, they can figure out exactly what the tenant needs to do.
Okay.
I think a lot of this, if it didn't need a special permit for the use, a lot of it, uh, would be just at the level of the building commissioner making the decision. If there's additional parking required or such that then triggers a site plan review, then it would come to us, but, uh, I think the, the change of use is the, is the issue that we need to be involved in.
Okay.
Anyone else have comments?
No comments. We need more information before we can.
Yes. Alright, um, next on our agenda was, uh, DLTA grant applications. What would we like to apply for? Is everyone familiar with the, the DLTA and you were, were sent the application material information that I received today?
I know, it was, I didn't really have time to look at it before.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, well, I did look at it, I'm familiar with it, but I didn't have enough time to what we need and what we should get together. So I guess if we have to submit something, Roger, I would just, whatever you suggest.
Yeah. I mean, they, the, what the selectman suggested, the land use portion of the master plan does um, tie into with the bylaw review committee. Kind of synergistic to have those two at the same time if, uh, you're reviewing bylaws, it would be a helpful one. Um, if we're doing a bylaw review, it kind of wouldn't make sense to go ahead with, um, getting a grant to implement some of the recommendations if we don't have them yet. Again, there, there most likely will be a second round that we can apply for. So, uh, kind of would like to get a, you know, something that's a major item in, in place for the first round. And it's just a matter of, of the timeframe of when the selectman can meet to vote to support what we're applying for. Or in a case to, any, any town board that is submitting an application, it doesn't have to be just us, but the selectmen need to endorse it, um, and get that into us and, uh, and to write up a, it's not a very lengthy application. Well, it's actually very simple.
Since Bill Johnson is on, Bill?
Yes.
Would you like to see us do?
Ask that again, Walt?
Is this what you would like to see us go for?
I, I, I think that makes the most sense, um, for the reasons that Roger's articulated with, uh, with the bylaw review starting pretty soon, um, it would seem to make sense.
Done.
Okay, so we will let the Board of Selectmen know that that's what we're going to be applying for. And they can do their work and get us a letter of support at their meeting on the 19th and we'll have that package together to submit, but we can, you know, um, I'll have something to put together as a draft to present to us at our meeting on the 20th. Talk with MRPC. And again, think about other things that we could apply for, for the second round.
So Roger, i- is, are you gonna have something, some, uh, specific verbiage on what exactly we should apply for? Or you're gonna apply for?
For the night, yes, I'll put something together. We'll have a draft at our planning board meets next week with MRPC. We can discuss it further and get something to the Board of Selectmen in time for your meeting on the 19th.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
At least a, uh, you know, even if it's just pre saying what we're intending to apply for.
No, that makes sense.
Yep. Um, I think, hold on, Bill, we got a, I think another item on the agenda for you.
I have a limit of one item per night.
Oh, okay, alright, well.
No, no, no.
You'll have to come back for another meeting.
Moving on to the scenic road.
If we're set on DLTA and we've dealt with Bray Avenue, we're onto 8B. Informational letter with the Board of Selectmen regarding scenic roads. I, Lindsay drafted it. I did a little more work on it and sent it out to everybody. Has everybody looked at it?
Yes. Uh, I would only recommend that where it says disturbance of any existing stone wall or the cutting or removal of the trees. Um, and in fact, I looked at the actual wording from the state bylaw and you might be able to steal, um, some of, you said, just to make it a little bit more comprehensive. Um, because frankly, the scenic road bylaw, really, you can't cut the roots of the trees. You can't cut, you can't trim the trees. You can't remove the trees. And, you know, even if they're, even if they're diseased. Uh, so, so we, I, I think only that part that, um, you said Lindsay did it, that it, that is, um, um, bold in bold print. I just think we should be a little bit more inclusive and maybe take the same language from the state bylaw.
Well, let's, is it an intent, Bill, that we would include copies of the bylaw along with this? Or is it just as a, as a directional letter of saying, look at those? Or should we put the a little more in as a, as a second page?
Well, I, I, I'm clearly not well versed on this, Roger, but just generally speaking, I would say it's always best to be as specific as possible and not leave it up to somebody else to have to go look someplace else to get information. Cause more times than not, they're not going to do that. Um, if it's, whether it's one page or two page, I, I, I don't think it makes a difference. I, I would just get as much specific information in there as possible and try to remove any doubt that anyone might have.
Are you seeing it on the screen?
I, I can see it, yes.
Okay. Uh, and Walt, where are you on?
Right where it's bold, right up there in that first there, it's, you know, prohibits the disturbance of it's, it's, and the actual wording, well, one of the wording, this is probably in three places, but one wording that I just pulled up real quickly says, shall not involve or include the cutting or removal of trees or the tearing down or destruction of stone walls or portions thereof, except with prior written consent of the planning board. Um, that's one, uh, and then looking at the other will erect and maintain purpose, uh, in closing, which, nope, uh, let me try something else here. But the, the, the only thing I, the only thing that I think has to be included is is the cutting or removal of trees. Because, and it's also, it says in our bylaws, the cutting the roots too. So, uh, let me see if I can find, here it is. Yeah. Cutting or removal of the trees means the removal of one or more trees, trimming of major branches or cutting of roots. So I, I mean, just, that's why I was saying not, we don't have to overthink this, I don't think. I, I think we just have to um, probably just take the wording straight from the bylaw.
Yeah.
And, and I think that would be my only recommendation.
Right.
Just because that, that leaves all doubt. Uh, let's see, public hearing. Cut or removed. Okay. So my, my estimate, I, I gather we're just going to send this to the, back to the Board of Selectmen and then they'll do the edit and they'll send it out?
Yeah, put it on light ahead and, yeah.
So. So Bill will have the opportunity to add his edits.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay, for.
Yeah, thank you.
Getting a good start on this. Alright, are we, uh, if we just make that edit, are we set to send it off to the Board of Selectmen? Get them off our backs.
I- i- if I may.
Sure, Mark.
I suggest you send it to the DPW.
Oh, it's going to everybody?
Okay.
Yeah, it's to go to, uh,
It's, it's gonna be widely circulated.
Yes.
There you go.
On boards, uh, property owners and tree trimming companies alike.
We're creeping up on three hours now.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Lindsay.
I think we will.
Sorry.
I agree with you, Lindsay.
Yeah, let's, uh, I think we have just like one more set of minutes to do and we can fall in the night.
We have two more sets of minutes.
We did one.
No, we did one. I think we only have one other one.
Yeah.
Oh, didn't you have the 24th and, oh, maybe, I, maybe I had the wrong date, so, okay.
Alright, let's get on to minutes.
Roger, do you need me for anything else?
We don't.
Alright, well, it's been a pleasure.
I'm sure it has, Bill.
Good night, Bill. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's, uh,
Okay.
We have, what, December 9th or something?
Yeah, I can, if, do you need me to pull them up?
Um, yeah.
I can't share, you need to.
Oh, okay, let me, uh.
Stop sharing.
Oh, uh, asking me to do this, uh, let's see. Off share. Alright, there you go.
Okay. Here we go. Any issues or comments, changes? We've had some long meetings lately.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually Walt just took really good notes.
Okay.
Get a little long-winded sometimes.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to approve?
I'll second that. I'll do a roll call vote. Richard Wright?
Yep.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Walt Meiser?
Yes.
Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
Roger Hoyt, yes. If you notice, I tried to do everybody in the same order each time, so it makes it easier and right in the minutes.
We don't get confused that way.
Well, I didn't, I haven't been typing it out in the minutes.
Okay, I had, at least on, on, um, public hearings, we should be putting them in, uh, by name.
One thing I noticed, we didn't do any of the announcements at this.
No, no, um, I said, we're, we're kind of back on our original, uh, thing other than recording the minute, doing live meetings. Um, does anyone have an urgent desire to meet in person to discuss these, uh, site plan reviews and such?
Why do we have one person?
What's that?
Why would you, we meet in person?
I don't know if it's easier to look at plans or are we able to do it sufficiently on computers. The paper copies are always at town hall to be picked up or sent to you, so, uh.
I Sorry, Roger, I agree. I, but one thing I do think though is applicants, they should be prepared too to take over the screen.
Yeah.
Plan, so that's something, um, yeah, I don't know if we, they should, well, they should probably be told that ahead of time when they their application, that they need to be prepared when they're given the Zoom link or whatnot to I, I just think it's easier. Then it's, it's centered on you and trying to find whatever documents and the right one.
Okay, I think we asked that of one applicant before and they had technical difficulties and weren't able to do it, but yes, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I can see if something comes up, but for most meetings I attend, they, they just take it on and they do it.
Yeah.
I'm much smoother.
Yes, okay. Noted, thank you.
So we all set with correspondence there, Roger?
I didn't get any.
Um, perfect. Dare, dare I say.
What's that? We have one thing from Marshall. You did send this. Yes, I was thinking about what I got in the mail here.
Well, you know. Well, you know, I, I, I'm sure I have amassed enough votes to be elected past to the month club, but nonetheless, I did submit a memorandum to the board dated December twentieth regarding certain, certain actions by Mr. Wright. And I just want to know whether anything's going to happen to those, to those comments, or whether they're just going to be totally ignored.
I think Mr., I think Mr. Wright replied with, to you with his, I guess it was a response that he originally had. But we did not have a chance to review that for this meeting.
I mean, there were, there were multiple violations of planning board rules and regulations and there's apparently has been no consequence.
Can I speak? Can I speak?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think we replied to all those to your letter and most of those were on the had nothing to do with the conservation committee's problem down below because we had no issues there at that moment. I did do a site plan review and we did everything we could to conserve that. And right now I am working with the town for the problem with the water down below. And that's where we're at at this point. The, the, anything to do with Ames Ave has nothing to do with anything you wrote because that was an issue that was done in eighty-five. I mean, I'm sorry, two thousand and five. And those answers were taken care of four or five years, four or five months ago.
I've never seen.
What are you talking about?
I've never seen those answers.
I'll be glad to send them to you again.
Well, please do for the first time because all I know is that there were violations of the lid bylaw and, and site plan review bylaws and to date, and, and you're trespassing over other people's property to access your other property. And, you know, apparently, you know, no one cares. What the heck's going on? You know, did you have approval for, for the Ames Road access?
I, I will be glad to let you come to my store and show you a copy of those plans or you can go to town hall and see them. Rogers saw them, the whole town has saw them because Ames Ave brought them to everybody's attention. That site plan review has been taken care of. It was just an extension to what happened this year was part of that problem. It has nothing to do with, anything to do with the issue down on Ames Ave. I mean, not Ames Ave, I'm sorry, on Maple. Has nothing to do with Maple. It has to do with Ames Ave and those issues, that road cut was in there three years ago. And when I was extending it, she brought it back up again. I was not wanting to do the curb cut again to Ames Ave. But she brought it up again, so I made sure I did it to the plan that was submitted. That's why the curb cut was done.
None of that is very explanatory.
It's on a plan.
Yeah, fine, it's on a plan. Did you have approval?
Yes.
From whom?
From the, I have approved plan.
From whom?
That's not my problem.
Yes, it is your problem.
No, it's not.
So can I, can I suggest, Marshall, that you review the, the comments if you haven't yet reviewed the comments? Because maybe he answered, he had answered questions to it.
We will, I will forward the response from Mr. Wright to you, Marshall. And then we can.
All I know is that there are butters to Ames Avenue that are aggrieved by the proposed or, or the existing action, increased traffic on a otherwise residential dead end roadway with children and other folks that are now aggrieved by the proposed, the, the action of this additional unlicensed, unpermitted curb cut. So, you know, I beseech the planning board to, you know, make restitution of, for the people of Ames Avenue and.
And, and I would like to, I would like the explanation here. Number one is when I was applying for the restaurant, I asked for approval for the restaurant. I had no access to the back lot except for one way to aim the Ames Ave back lot. And this, this is all on the plan, okay? And it is on, it's on the plan that was approved by the town for me to build my restaurant, okay? Now, wait a minute, I don't care what happened on the other end.
Excuse me, but that plan was withdrawn and never approved. And there was never an indication on that plan on access onto Ames Avenue.
Why was I able to build a restaurant?
You weren't.
I was.
No, you weren't. It was never.
It was built.
It was.
The restaurant was built.
Are you talking about the existing?
About the same thing.
Forty-one.
I think there's a disconnect.
It connects to that back lot.
It should not because you trespass over another property.
And I have an easement.
Yeah.
If I wouldn't have had the easement, I wouldn't have been approved to have the parking in the back of that lot to make the restaurant approved. So you're wrong. Check your paperwork. It was approved or I would not have been able to build my restaurant.
Except for access to Maple Avenue.
Exactly, but I had an easement to that property to enter Ames Ave.
From forty-one Main Street?
Yes.
And, and.
Check your plans, check your plans.
Well, not the plans. There's, there's nothing that ever mentioned any easement.
We're talking about two thousand four, two thousand five, is that?
Exactly.
Plans?
Roger saw the plans.
On that, what's at town hall has a drawn in driveway. That's the only thing I found at town hall in the files. From, and that's what you have on, on your property.
The drawings.
Yes.
And was it approved by the DPW?
That, I don't have any record in our file, nor have I gone through the files swiftly to look for that because at the time of this application, we couldn't come into town hall.
Nonetheless, it needs to be approved by the, by the, by Steve Nims. And was it or not?
Is this a recent violation? Yeah, I mean.
I don't care when it was.
I, I know, but there, there is a time limit on some of these. I mean, if we're bringing up points from fifteen years ago and.
All of a sudden, all, all I know is that the butters on Ames Avenue.
Have the butters complained? I'm sorry, you're, this, first I've heard from you. I haven't heard anything.
You know, dare I say, Bill Johnson of our Board of Selectmen and his son, who owned property thereon, have frequently utilized the access that was created by Mr. Wright and has caused, you know, hardship to other butters immediately opposite the access, including runoff that was created, that heretofore did not exist onto their property without due, you know, erosion controls. And I, I really think that access needs to be truncated and put back the way it was into our gate installed so that people do not access Ames Avenue and convert it from a dead end residential street into a thoroughfare.
That approval was done for one reason only, for the parking in the back of that lot. For my easement was only to access one way to the back of my lot through that property. So I needed a second easement. They tried to stop the restaurant. The same person that's giving you, telling you what's going on, tried to stop the restaurant. And the only way I could go forward with that was to cut a curb cut to Ames Ave that I own property on to make sure I had the second easement out of my property. That's the only reason I did what I did. And it shows it on the plan on two thousand and five. Prove it otherwise.
Was that approved by the planning board and by the DPW?
Yes, it was approved by the planning board and filed with the planning board because I would not have had the restaurant if I didn't have the parking in the back of that lot.
But, Richard, I guess the point to find out is, is there a driveway permit for the opening with the DPW?
I don't know if it was a driveway. Grow up because I didn't need to use it because everybody used the other way.
Well, that's, that's the issue and I guess.
I own thirty feet of road frontage on Ames Ave.
Yes, but the building commissioner, the vision, building commissioner.
That doesn't mean you can do what you want with it.
So let's.
I've been doing it for years.
All right, unfortunately.
Okay, gentlemen, let's, let's find the records and, and find the records of a driveway opening application with a DPW.
Okay, and Roger, one, one thing I have to say now is still, that lot is only access to that lot is on Ames Ave. It's not still part of any other properties. It's still access to Ames Ave.
The access is from Maple Avenue.
Still only access to that lot is Ames Ave.
It's from Maple Avenue.
Through the easement from, not Maple, I don't own that yet.
You don't own what?
The lot goes, look back on your records. I didn't own Maple Ave till two years ago. And you're talking about ten years ago. Okay, go back to your records. When I owned my property own now, I bought Ames Ave and we hooked up the restaurant to that area to use for parking. There was an issue. You can't do your, your restaurant because you don't have sufficient parking. Yes, I do. I have it on Ames Ave. And they go, you can't use that because you don't have sufficient egress back and forth. I had only eighteen feet. So I said, okay, if you want to block that, I'll go to Ames Ave because I have thirty feet on Ames Ave and I'll use that property. And they said, okay, that's what you have and that'll make it work so you can go in and out on Ames Ave. So that's what we did. And I was approved for my restaurant. I would not have been approved for the restaurant without that.
Well, okay, I, Roger, I, I will end this quickly, but when you say restaurant, are you talking about the tavern?
The tavern, yes.
Okay, but that was done years ago. Why did you have to blow through and make Ames Avenue last year? Had nothing to do with the restaurant.
Oh, honesty, I didn't want to have to do that. But when I was back there extending my area for my parking, she caused a big ruckus, so I had to go back to my original plan to make it legal. I didn't do it for, I'd be glad to close that frickin' egress in a second flat, but she forced my hand.
She would have loved to have you close it.
Exactly, but she forced it open.
No, she did not.
She did not. She did, because if I wouldn't have done what I did, I wouldn't have done it. If, if she gives me in writing, it's okay for me to use that for parking in my egress in and out. I'll close that. I have no problem.
You have no parking on Ames Avenue. It's only an access.
It is a legal lot. Ames Ave is still a legal lot. It's not separated or it's not used for anything else except for parking for the tavern. So it's still a legal lot on Ames Ave with thirty feet of road running.
Okay, and you have an, you have an agreement with the owner of the other parcel to pass and repass over their property to access Ames Avenue.
I do. I have an egress.
No, you have an easement, written easement from the property owner.
I do.
Well, I, I would ask them. Available to the public for review.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. We will put this on agenda for the next meeting then, upcoming meeting and research and provide the documentation.
Thank you, folks.
All right. It would have been under full business or under open discussion rather than. All right. We'll see you next week.
Except, you know, I'm sorry, but again, you know, I understand Mr. Wright is saying, but that doesn't preclude the fact that he committed violations of lid bylaws and other, you know, and, and so what do you plan to do about it? Nothing?
No, I think the board, for personally myself, I just need to look into it. I haven't had an opportunity. We are very busy this.
You know, it's obviously disturbed by the seventy-five hundred square feet.
It was brought to the building commissioners' attention at the time.
But there's a planning board issue, not the building commissioners.
Well, the plant, it. That was clearly stated by town council.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion? Adjourned.
I would second, I would hope second that motion. We will adjourn. All in favor, our roll call vote? Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yeah, blast.
And myself, yes. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.